Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good afternoon. I call the informational meeting of January 26, 2021, to order. Welcome to those watching online or here in person. Let's start with the roll call of your city council.
Councilors Breckie.
Here.
Erickson, Jensen.
Here.
Kylie.
Here.
Knightsert.
Here.
Selberg.
Here.
Sale.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Okay, very good. We have five in person and two by telephone. Just for a friendly reminder when you're not talking, as we do hear feedback and other background noise occasionally. We are going to move on to committee and commission reports. We have one, the Tuthill Resource Group, Tuthill House Resource Group, excuse me. Councilmember Breckie, do you have that report?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, it's really just moving forward. I did report on it two weeks ago. Everything is moving forward very nicely. The Finance Committee is working on the gifting agreement. They have several copies of ones that have worked before. And so they're actually starting the drafting process of that and figuring out what the language might be for that. The Finance Committee has come a long way. They're fully set up and operational under the Community Foundation. And they are working on a, they had a fundraising letter that they presented at the committee. And then they also are working on a donor list and doing visits, you know, calling and doing visits, you know, you know, via the internet. And so that's going very, very well. Sarah DeWitt is working on the final touches of the proposed design. And the landscape design artist, Adam Meyerlink, I believe that's his name, is, you know, working on, he's got a rough outline of what the garden area around the house might look like. So we do plan on giving a full presentation to the council. That won't be just me. That will be some of the citizens who are working on these various committees in February, as the council requested. And there'll be probably some PowerPoint presentations, and you'll have a full update on what we're doing. But it's moving along very well. It's a very, very active group. In fact, I can't really believe how much we've accomplished in such a short time.
Okay, thank you very much. Look forward to that presentation when it comes forward. Next, we'll move on to council remarks. Anybody with council remarks today?
Mr. Chair, I do.
Yes, Council Kylie.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize our city clerk, Mr. Tom Greco. Tom is celebrating his fifth anniversary with the Sioux Falls City Council. It was five years ago this month that he joined us. He has played a very integral part, not only the city council, but very much so within our community. So I appreciate his talent and dedication and wish to recognize him for his five-year anniversary mark. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Kylie. And I would just reiterate that we are incredibly lucky to have somebody with his knowledge and integrity serving us, and the citizens are incredibly lucky to have him as their city clerk. Any other council remarks today? Okay. With that, we're going to move on to presentations. First presentation is TIFF 23, Foundation Park North Update. And I see Director Ekoff coming up. And we also have Bob Munt here, President of the Sioux Falls Development Foundation. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Jeff Ekoff, Planning and Development Services. Glad to be here today. As Chairman Knightsert said, Bob Munt will be doing the second half of this presentation after I'm done with some opening remarks. We also have Todd Meyer Henry as legal counsel for the Development Foundation, and Brendan Riley, who was our third-party legal representation on this issue. And of course Dustin's here, and Mike Gray from the Development Foundation as well. So a wealth of knowledge if you have additional questions once we're done. So last week, the city released our latest population estimate. And of course, when the census comes out, we always true that up, but we continue to provide the estimate. And it was almost 196,000 people. So next year, we'll hit that threshold of 200,000. And as we get to those big milestones, things just happen. The landscape changes. And it takes us to another level in a lot of respects. And today, I want to talk to you about the level that we are with economic development, the opportunity that exists for us out in Foundation Park to compete at another level, and talk to you about how this TIFF will help us accomplish that. You know, we're no longer competing with Aberdeen and Fargo, and we're competing with Omaha and Lincoln and Kansas City and places like that. And so to get there and to continue to have projects like Amazon and names like that come in, this is why we're bringing the TIFF in front of you today. For these companies, time often is as important as money is. Certainly was the case with Amazon, who did not ask for any financial incentives, but what they did ask for was a very fast timetable. So we had to hit every mark to get the construction done and get the permits done on a timely basis. And so that's the challenge we have is getting ahead of these large projects. And when they're taking 80 and 100 acres down at a time, you have to get ahead of it in order to be ready for them. It's not like a 10-acre parcel you can go out and grade in, you know, in a very short period of time. We don't have a lot of tools in South Dakota. You've heard us talk about that before when we talk about TIFF. And this particular TIFF is really interesting, and there's some differences in this one from the ones we've done in the past. I just kind of want to touch on that. In a lot of respects, this takes us back to one of the early downtown TIFFs when they actually TIF'd the improvements on the Quest Building, now the CenturyLink Building, to do lots of different improvements downtown, streetscaping and benches and all kinds of things that helped set the tone for what happened downtown. And so instead of a specific project, which is what you're used to seeing, whether it's a Sioux Steel or whether it's whatever it might be, it's over a larger district. It's over 460 acres of unimproved land. The TIFF district is 540 acres. We're using the Amazon site for the increment, so to take those 80 acres out, there's 460 unimproved acres that will be improved with this TIFF and to get us ready and to be site-ready, shovel-ready, if you will, for the next, for the next project. We're used to working with private developers and developers' TIFF. We're working with the private nonprofit developer, who is our economic development partner, the Sioux Falls Development Foundation. And you just need to know, in most communities in our state, this is very common practice, where the community will pass the TIFF, they'll use it to put an infrastructure into their development parks, in their industrial development parks, because that's where their job creation for a lot of those communities lies. We have been using it specifically downtown with a couple of exceptions. This is a chance to spread that out to the next level and be more of a job creator. The Sioux Falls Development Foundation is our economic development nonprofit partner. They've been around for almost 60 years. They were formed in order to attract the Arrow's data center to this area, if you have that history, remember that history. Since then, they've developed eight industrial parks that cover over 1,300 acres and are, today are home for over 12,000 jobs. So the strategy of building land, preparing land, selling land to both prospective companies from outside your community, but more importantly, to those who look to expand inside your, because, believe me, just as we are looking at other communities, we are now a target for them, too, to come and say, oh, company A, if you want to expand, why don't you come to Kansas City and we'll do this and we'll do that? So it's also, it's also a competition to keep companies and let, and help them to expand here in Sioux Falls rather than someplace else. So this public-private partnership is the critical piece to success in communities that I've worked with. And I've been in and around economic development now for almost 25 years, and I've seen this public-private partnership be the key. The city does what it can do with zoning. It can do infrastructure, has the tools that we have with the TIFFs. And then the private sector, the private nonprofit, leads the way with recruitment and developing the land and working with the companies to get them in place. So tonight, we're asking for a different approach than what we're used to. Again, it's common, most places, just about everywhere else, especially in South Dakota, it's a very common approach. It's a developer's TIFF, but it's with our private nonprofit partner. And we're preparing 460 new acres. And Bob will talk a little bit in his presentation about who those tenants might be and what it might look like. So we're preparing the, if you think of it this way, the 460 acres is the subdivision. That we're getting ready for developments so people can come in and build and be ready to build ready. But it's a big piece of ground, and we're not sure exactly how every lot will lay out. So there's a 30,000, or pardon me, a $30 million competitiveness fund in there that you'll see, which is a little unusual. But again, what that does is it allows us to pay for future identifiable costs. So for example, we get a user that needs all of a sudden an extra gas line because of the process that they have, or they need additional electric service, things that we hadn't thought of in the general preparation of the subdivision. It allows us to come in on a case-by-case basis and add, and pay for those things to get that in place for that company to be able to come in and operate. So there's a future unidentifiable cost, there's things for retention and recruitment of those types of companies as part of the, part of that competitiveness fund. All things that would happen within the district or the boundaries of those 540 acres that the district is in or the 460 undevelopable. That's not dedicated to any one project. It's there for what projects come up and the uses that they have. And you'll see in the, in the slides today, the litany, pardon me, the list of improvements and projects that that money can be used for, and Bob will cover that for you as well. So with that, I thank you for your time. I'm going to have Bob Munt come up, and then we'll both be available, as well as other staff, for questions afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Bob.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff, and thank you all for your time hearing our information here today. I want to also acknowledge Jeff and his staff. They've been absolutely remarkable to work with. And, you know, someone as knowledgeable as them is really, you guys are fortunate to have them as part of your team. So I also want to acknowledge a couple of folks that came with me today, Joe Fiella. I was back here with the Governor's Office of Economic Development. And way in the back there is Pat Costello, and Pat is the chairman of the Development Foundation Board right now. And some of you might remember Pat as one-time being at that GOED office. And again, it's just great to have them here. But as Jeff mentioned, we, we've been talking about this for quite some time, quite frankly, trying to figure out how we can get that north section basically under development. We have had multiple discussions about what it is that we want to do with that. And so I just want to walk through a couple of slides here today and maybe take you on a little journey about where we've been and where we'd like to go. The Development Foundation, as Jeff said, has been around quite some time. Back in the 70s, we started our first development park. You can see where that's at, followed by number two, three, and all the way through park number eight. In 2015, 2016, we took a very bold step to really reach out and, and look at what it takes to build the next mega site or mega park, as they were referring to it as. And so we found that property at the intersection of two major interstates, dissected by a major rail line, and having the access that it has, being contiguous to the city, having access to utilities and the stuff that we needed in order to make that park work. So when we started this concept of Foundation Park, we also looked at recently, how would we develop this TIFF boundary to make this thing work? And so you guys have seen this boundary before. It was essentially approved back in September. It is, again, north of I-90, west of I-29. As Jeff mentioned, 540 acres, which includes the Amazon property as well. And again, what we're looking at is how do we prepare that area north of the tracks, basically, for development and for future advancement? So the purpose, really, of Foundation Park, as it was described to me and as I, again, began to understand it, was that it's really to take us in this community to the next level. Jeff mentioned competition with Kansas City and Omaha and Des Moines and Minneapolis and places like that. Those are the company, or those are the cities now that we are really competing with. So when you look at how we proceeded with this thing with the land purchase in 2016, and again, all the advantages that we have that you see up there, it really made this park something that was special. So when I took a look at coming here to Sioux Falls, this is one of the things that was really stood out to me as something, someplace that I'd really like to work. It really gave us the tools to be able to do that. So some people have also asked about, give us an update on Foundation Park, kind of where we're at right now. Acres sold, we've sold 176 acres to date in Foundation Park South, which is the area south of the railroad tracks. About 188 acres is still remaining. Most of that is rail sites. And so we're being pretty guarded with those rail sites because they're pretty hard to come by. And so we're going to make sure that we keep those as long as we can. Those developments, about 4.7 million square feet of space will be created out there. The assessed value, 309 million, 1,300 jobs, property taxes generated. You can see that up there, along with plating fees and sewer escrow fees as well. So as we sell the property, those plating fees and sewer escrow, escrow fees are paid. What we project in that next phase of this, which is north of the tracks, basically, again, 540 acres, we believe that we're going to have five to eight businesses, depending upon the size of those businesses, creating 4,000 to 6,000 jobs in the neighborhood of 200 to 300 million as it comes to the annual payroll. Capex is basically the amount of dollars that these companies are spending to build their buildings and furnish their buildings, et cetera, about 2.5 billion. Tax base, 1.2 billion, and that generates about $24 million annually in taxes. These are all numbers that we've received from Department of Revenue as far as the multiplier effects and things like that. So along with that are construction jobs, support jobs that go along with that as well. So a little bit about Foundation Park. I'll just kind of walk you through this here, this video that we have. This is the Amazon construction site, and you can see the magnitude of these things. When you look at those cranes, that, those little yellow sticks that are down there, the little yellow cars, it's kind of like a little matchbox set, you know, you see all these little cars down there. This is the new entrance, basically the southern entrance to Foundation Park, the completion, basically, of the loop. So Foundation Court, again, as we travel east on that, this will all be done this next spring. So we'll hard-surface that this next spring. We'll be putting that out to bid here, I think, next week. So all of this will become hard-surfaced. There's a buffer area between this area and McCrossin. And as you kind of turn the corner here, we get into the area that is still basically open for sale. We have some extreme activity on that right now, quite frankly. And again, looking at this 115 acres, this is what we have essentially remaining in Foundation Park South. So we did rough grade that this last spring and summer to make it look basically presentable. And again, get rid of some of the hills and valleys and things like that to make it more presentable. As we look kind of to the east here, you can see we've got some additional property available down towards the interstate there. The other things that are happening out there, windshield's going to begin their new expansion. You can see to the right there that that space is basically ready for building this next spring. So they'll be coming out of the ground this next spring. And the other one that's going to be completing their particular site is the Nordica Building as well. So this is the 450-plus acres that you see kind of north of the tracks that we'll be developing. Again, you can see right now, it's just bare, bare farmland, essentially, a lot of hills, a lot of valleys, a lot of work to be done out there, quite frankly. And so as we kind of get the scope and the size of this project, you can see it's very large, much larger than what we've done in the past. So to give some comparison, this is actually downtown. That's superimposed over the top of Foundation Park. So Foundation Park is 820 acres. Downtown is 450 acres. So again, just the magnitude of this, it's more than what we've done before. And again, it's something that, again, takes us to that next level when we look at development. So again, the TIFF overview, right now, that area that you see in yellow is generating about $70,000 a year in taxes. It's zoned ag, basically, and so it's one of those small contributors. We are today asking for a $94.4 million TIFF for that particular site. Again, that's to make this area shovel-ready. And again, as Jeff mentioned, also that economic competitiveness fund. So the TIFF overview, just kind of looking at how this all shakes out. Provide the shovel-ready industrial land that we talked about. That includes the roads. That includes the water. It includes the sewer, grading of the entire site, regional detention facilities, additional rail spurs that need to go into the site itself. And again, it covers 460 acres. Again, just scope, size, that's the equivalent of 350 football fields in that particular area. So again, large, large area. We look at the eligible project cost, which is how we have to basically define this according to state statute. The eligible project cost, again, infrastructure improvements and site preparedness, about 50.4 million. We'll go into that. 26,000 linear feet of industrial-grade roads, sewers, et cetera. About 500,000 cubic yards of earth and environmental work that'll have to be done. And again, the 460 acres, plating, sanitary sewer, cost recovery, those types of things. Also going to be done testing, financing costs. That goes into that second 52 million. And then the economic development competitiveness fund of 30 million. And again, using that fund really to support the costs and activities that are associated with economic development and bringing more development to this particular site. So again, total eligible cost, 132 million. We're asking for roughly 94 million. This is a further breakdown of some of those costs. We've been working with engineers over the last two to three months to kind of put these numbers together and what we think it might cost to do that. That helped us come up with that 132 million dollars of eligibility. And from that, we looked at how much can we, as a development foundation, contribute into this as well in producing what we want to be a finished product, and then how much we need from the TIFF in order to make this work. So that's kind of a breakdown. Some of you had asked for some line item discussions of that or line item indications of that. So that is what this is. So the development, Economic Development Competitiveness Fund, we looked at that. It's really to strategically support future identifiable costs located within the TIFF district that are associated with increased build-out. So we'll talk a little bit more about that here in a minute. But the allocation, 30 million, what are some potential uses? Site-specific improvements. So when we get companies that come in that may need more than just the rough grade, for example, or they may need additional sewer capacity or water capacity or something like that, we have that fund available that we can tap into to make those happen and to be more competitive and competing with some of those folks that I mentioned earlier. Recruitment and retention of businesses, again, looking at who's the next one that we bring out there. Now that we have CJ Foods kind of on the line, who's the next one? And how do we kind of open up those doors for them? And lastly, really looking at the oversight of this particular fund. The city of Sioux Falls and the Development Foundation would work together to kind of create that oversight group, if you will, to manage this particular fund. So again, in summary, 2.5 billion would be the capex that these companies, we feel, would be putting into this particular site. 132 million is the eligible project cost. The projected investment is 2.6 mil, 2.6 billion, and that tax increment that we're asking for is 94 million. So pretty small percentage of that total project investment. Well, timeline on this, again, tonight, we're here with the informational that we have in front of you. In February, we'll be going to the Minnehaha County Commission to basically do the same presentation to them. The Tri-Valley School District, we'll be talking to them and making this presentation to them. I think it's February 3rd. We're scheduled to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission to make our presentation to them with the first reading coming in council on the 16th of February, and the second reading then scheduled for March the 2nd. So that's kind of the timeline moving forward. And what we're asking you really is to help us review and approve the project plan and the eventual development agreement that we'll have in order to get this TIFF in place. So with that, I'm going to open it up for questions. And I, I reserve the right to have Jeff back up here and answer some questions for me or some of my support people behind me. So open it up for questions, and we'll go from there.
Absolutely. We'll open up to the council. Questions? Oh, come on now. We got to have something. This is big. Anybody on the phones right now?
Council chair.
Yes, we'll go to Council Breckie, and then we'll go to Sale.
Question about the 30 million, you know, and I, and I get it, why you want to have that. But assuming that that's not all spent, then what happens to it if it's not used? If it's, if it's not needed or it's not, if there's, if there's some leftover after the thing is developed?
Yeah, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, or Dustin, I guess. I, I could answer, but I'm not going to. I'm going to let Dustin do that.
Good afternoon, Council Dustin Powers, Development Services. So yeah, the, the project, the TIFF request for the $94 million, of that is the 30 million. If some funds, even of the 94, we established that based on project costs associated with the sewer and things. And so if those project costs come in less than what they are, then those expenses won't necessarily be reimbursed through the TIFF. So ultimately, at the end of the day, we would be reimbursing less than 94 million if those expenses don't occur by the end of the TIFF district, essentially, so.
Stays in the special fund held in trust by the city, and only, only expenses that are actually incurred are reimbursed.
Yep. When they're incurred, then we can reimburse them, yep. And so again, this fund gives us the flexibility to determine what those are going to be incurred moving forward. But again, the incurred cost does have to occur, so.
Follow-ups or additional?
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Council Sale.
Thank you. I'm not sure. This is more of a finance question. Let's assume somebody's tuning in for the very first time, and they're seeing the city is being asked for $94 million. Could somebody walk us through where that money comes from? Because I know that we just don't write a check.
Right.
So if somebody could walk through from the basics on how a TIFF district is financed, I think it's appropriate for people that might not know that.
Absolutely. And I'll, I'll give it the first shot, and then I can be, like I said, I can be upped by one of the guys behind me. So how the TIFF typically would work is that the companies that are in that district that we have established pay their taxes. Let me back up a second. So right now, there is a base amount that is established for what that's worth, right? So there's a base amount of taxes that are paid in that particular district. The companies that then move into that district pay their taxes, just like any other company would. But the increment between the base value and what the properties are generating at any given time during that TIFF period is captured in what they call the increment. That increment, then, is then used to finance the infrastructure that we're talking about in the project plan. So in the meantime, what we, you know, would look at doing, basically, is we would finance that through the Development Foundation until such time that the TIFF began to materialize. So it's going to take, what, is it two years, a year and a half for the, for the tax dollars to catch up, basically? So the first year and a half or two that we're going to be not having the revenue from the TIFF, the Development Foundation will be financing that portion of that and paying to do the roads and things like that. We're doing that through our bank consortium.
Okay, so to go a little bit farther on that, the $94 million, that would be reimbursable taxes that would come from a corporation pays their property taxes, it's reimbursed. How long would it take to accumulate that $94 million, based on your projections for what we might see in growth out there?
Yeah, so everything depends upon the number of companies that you get to locate in that district at what particular time. So the way we've figured it right now is that we now, we have the Amazon facility that's there that will be generating taxes here. We know now we have the CJ Foods possibility there as well. And anybody else coming in after that, those taxes generated would add more being paid into that TIFF. So we'll be able to pay down, if you will, that $94 million quicker. The more companies we get there and building and that are taxable, the faster that TIFF is paid down.
And your projection on when, I, I understand how that works, so.
Yeah.
Bob, what are you going to, how, how quick are you going to have all those companies paying that off?
Well, I might ask Mike to come up. He's, Mike Gray, some of you know Mike, but Mike's been the one that's kind of been putting all the numbers together in this, so I'm going to let him answer that.
Good afternoon, councilors. Mike Gray, representing the Sioux Falls Development Foundation. Thank you for the question, Council Sale. So in the project plan that you'll see brought forward, there is a feasibility study where we have to make those estimates and projections on when those businesses will locate in the park based off the $94.4 million request with the financing costs that'll be incurred. Right now, the feasibility study projects about 14 to 15 years, so it could be 2035, 2036, when the TIFF would be paid off. We believe that that's a very conservative projection. But for the purposes of the feasibility study, we wanted to make it a conservative projection. In reality, we think we'll be able to develop it faster, and the TIFF will pay off quicker than what's being projected.
Thank you.
Others? Yes, Council Selberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know, maybe just more of a statement than questions. We did have the opportunity to sit down with you recently, and I had a lot of the questions answered at that time. I'm just extremely excited about this. And of course, that's a big number we're talking about in TIFF. But then when you go back to the page that we looked at, projected businesses and jobs, and you see things like 4,000 to 6,000 jobs projected, annual payroll 200 to 300 million. You've got billions on a couple of things, including tax-based projected 1.2 billion. Taxes generated 24 million annually. I mean, it's, it's a big number, the TIFF number. And a lot of people that get on the negative side and whatever, always point to that. But again, a lot of these things don't happen without this incentive, and the things that are going to come from that, I think, are just incredible. So I am very excited about what's going on out there and especially what's come about in the last few years. It's just been incredible. So I appreciated the chance to meet and answer questions. So I appreciated the chance to meet and answer questions earlier, but thank you for presenting again.
I'm excited too. I mean, this is what I do for a living and this community has just gone heads and tails above my expectations in the short time that I've been here. And in all honesty, this is the next level for Sioux Falls. I grew up, you know, thirty years ago, twenty miles from here, and watched Sioux Falls grow over the years. And this is the next level. We, we are there and I think we can make a huge impact at this point. So again, thanks for your support and I hope we can continue to have that and, and earn that through the next several weeks.
Very good. I do have.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, yes, Counselor Kylie.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to add a little bit to what Counselor Selberg had stated. I mean, it's, the payoff now, it, it's, you just have to look at the numbers that were presented earlier. The, currently, the taxes paid on agricultural land is relatively low to what the potential of this park is going to be, especially once it is fully established. So in addition to those taxes, you're going to have individuals that are working, earning salaries, going out into the community, buying goods in the community and paying taxes in that regard, which are not factored into this at all. Also, it'll attract individuals to the city of Sioux Falls, which will then be paying additional property taxes, which again, is not factored into this TIF. So there's a lot of advantages to this particular development park. We have already realized a lot of that and I believe we're going to continue to see more of it in the future. And Bob, I, I would guess that you're, we, I know, this is, I think, my third meeting on this particular topic. We've discussed, you know, where's the next industrial park going to be, foundation park going to be? And I, I would guess that you've been communicating with adjacent land owners. Can you confirm that or plant, at least planting the seeds in what is now agricultural? Or, sorry for the pun?
I cannot confirm nor deny that. No, of course we have. I mean, as, as we're, you know, we don't want to get the cart ahead of the horse necessarily, but we also don't, don't want to be left behind either. And so, you know, it would be irresponsible for us not to be looking out as, as far as what's the next foundation park too. But again, we've got a lot of work to do on this park to get it up and operating and, and to attract additional ones here. But we are starting those conversations with, you know, potentially adjacent land owners, potentially other spots, you know, around the community. I'll tell you, it's going to be really hard to duplicate this foundation park when you look at the intersection of two interstates, rail lines, adjacent to the city, utilities, those types of things. Again, you don't find that in very many communities and, and to do it twice. I'm not going to say we can't do it, but it's going to take a lot of work. So we are looking out, Counselor Kylie, and certainly, you know, when we find that magical place, we'll let you know.
Well, thank you very much. And I, I do know that, of course, I was on the council when this first was a, foundation park was first established. It got off to a relatively slow start, but as of recent, things have really been picking up. And so now we're starting to reap the dividends there. And I, I would guess, I would at least hope that, you know, the same will continue as we develop northward. So thank you very much for your efforts and for everyone else that's been involved in it.
Thank you, Counselor Kylie. I guess I do have a few questions. And for the benefit of the public, all of us as counselors individually, we're able to meet with the Development Foundation and get kind of a sneak preview and ask some questions. So don't confuse lack of questions now for lack of interest. So first of all, I guess, taking from what Counselor Sale was referring to, I think it is important, you know, there's, there's a lot of, I guess, misunderstanding when it comes to TIF. And so like what I'll try to dumb it down and try to explain to people is, in, in this park, for example, if you have an acre of land, it might be just farmland and it might be paying, let's say, a thousand dollars in property tax right now. And if we create a district, that's the base. And if, if a company comes in and they build a humongous factory on it and now they're paying a hundred thousand dollars a year in property tax, they will continue to, they will pay that property tax as normal. The only difference is ninety-nine thousand of it, the increment, will go into this special fund that the city holds in trust. And then as expenses are incurred, for example, you build roads and build things like that, you can submit receipts and you get reimbursed for it. So you still continue to pay your taxes, it's just a way in which you can get reimbursed for certain expenses. It's not a waiver of, of taxes, it's not a giveaway, it's not tax, we're not giving, giving city money away, so.
That's exactly right.
Okay. Did you consider, I mean, obviously, you don't know exact, all of these numbers are going to be, I, I would assume some of the infrastructure numbers may be a little firmer, but you show a hundred and, what was it, a hundred and thirty million in potentially reimbursable expenses? Hundred-and-thirty-two-point-seven. And you're asking for ninety or so?
Ninety-four, yep.
Ninety-four. The, the first two alone get you over the ninety-four you're asking for. Now, I'm not necessarily opposed to the Economic Development Competitiveness Fund, but did you think about, you could just get all you're asking for with just the first two? And if you're reimbursed for all of that, then that may create money savings for you where you have some of your own capital, where you'd be able to do some sort of other incentives. The Economic Development Competitiveness Fund is just a little bit different than maybe what we've done in the past, so it's the only reason I ask.
Yeah. Do you want me to talk about that a little bit more?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. Well, each development will have kind of its own set of needs that sometimes are difficult to reject before that happens. And so the establishment of the Economic Development Competitiveness Fund is really to assist with additional site preparation that might need to be done, infrastructure development of cost associated with individual property purchases and build outs, those types of things, depending upon what type of company it is. It could pay for future identifiable costs either associated in those line items that you saw up there that may go over budget or, or whatever. It could also be used for fine grading of, of a site for, you know, as maybe an incentive for a, a, a prospect that you have, for example. It might be site-specific infrastructure, it could be rail extensions, it could make for competitive land pricing if we're competing with other pieces of property in other states, for example. Financial assistance when it comes to utilities or things like that could also be in that particular thing. It really depends upon the, the site, it depends upon the prospect and what their basic needs are and what we need to do in order to be competitive to land them here. So it's kind of a all-encompassing thing, but it just gives us the flexibility to be able to respond to our prospects, to be able to compete with our competitors and to be able to do the things that we need to do in order to get that next company here.
Okay. It, and I take it, all, all of this land is a, stay unflatted until a company comes in and they say, we want this parcel? And then at that point, is that when it gets platted and they pay the plating fees? Or somebody pays the plating fees?
That's correct. So this, what we typically do with large tracts of ground like this is, like right now, it's, it's zoned ag, so it's not even zoned industrial yet. So between now and, and in the spring, we have to get that rezoned. But your question on plating is, once we sell the property, then we pay the plating fees and the sanitary sewer cost recovery fees upon sale. And it's so much per acre. I can't remember off the top of my head what, what that is, but it's so much per acre that we pay upon the sale of that property. So each prospect that comes in and buys a hundred acres, they'll pay, when they, when we close on the property, they'll pay that, or we will pay that basically out of the sales price of the property.
Have you contemplated using that as some sort of, you could use the, the fund for something like that? For example, you could take care of the plating fees with a fund like that? Because presumably, when you're selling land, you would presumably have, I mean, somebody's paying the plating fees one way or the other.
Right.
So I, obviously, if you have the sale price, I would assume you, you must be factoring in the fact that there's going to be plating fees that have to be paid.
We are, yeah.
So, you know, you're going to charge for the land, I would think, what it's going to take. And, and so that may be a benefit to the, to whoever the next, you know, the owner is. So, and I see.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Director here, maybe he has.
Thanks for saving me, man. Appreciate it.
Well, I'm not done yet. Don't say that, yeah. That's a great question. So one of the things about the competitiveness fund, so for example, we could put that thirty million into the north entrance, we could put it into a street, but what if we don't need it there? We could certainly use it for plating fees. So that, that list, that long list of eligible costs that are within the slides and they'll be in the, in the TIF plan, that way, we can apply it to any of those based on the need that comes up. So it might be the plating fees for that particular prospect, or it might be a water line, or it might be additional roads. I mean, he has a, a loop road in there, but we know that we'll have to probably build another north-south connector at some point in time. So it's just to keep that more flexible based on the needs of the project that comes up.
Yeah, yeah.
That's helpful.
Pl- plating fees can be significant and that's going to drive up the price of either development or, or the sale price of the land. And based on our enterprise model, we can't just waive plating fees. But who's paying it is not really a big deal, so.
Plating fees are in that list of eligible costs and would be.
They are, okay.
But yes, maybe one of the things that could be paid. So it'll, we take a look at that, each individual project, what, where the pain points are, if you will, and what Bob needs to do to help make the, the, the project work, so.
Okay. And taking a look at my notes and see what else I.
Sure.
Might have, might have written down as well. Can I ask a quick question while you're?
Yes, yes, please.
What is the minimum amount of land you can buy out there? Let's say you're, and I'm going to way oversimplify this, but let's say I, boy, what a great place for a Burger King. So I want to put a Burger King in Foundation Park. Can you buy whatever? What's the minimum amount of acres you have to commit to, to do anything out there?
First of all, this is an industrial park, so we probably wouldn't let a Burger King in there.
Okay.
Quite frankly, so that would be my easy answer. We have lots available out there now. I think our smallest lot is two acres and that's just because we, we couldn't combine it with the piece next to it, right? So we got a really small one, but three or four of them are four to six acres lots. But most of them are, you know, we're reserving for larger. And I, I would say, we don't have necessarily a minimum that we would sell, but I'd like to say, you know, for less than, you know, ten or twenty acres in that southern piece, we probably wouldn't do much for less than that. And then the northern piece, I mean, we're, we're looking fifty to a hundred to two-hundred acres. These are the big, the big fish that we're after, right? So they're going to come in and they're going to want fifty, seventy-five, a hundred, a hundred and forty, in the case of CJ's. You know, we're just keeping that very flexible until we know what it is, how much they need, and just keeping it very flexible.
Okay.
And that's one of the reasons too, why we're only completing the roads, basically to the point that we are, because we don't know what's going to happen to the east of that, right? So we just want to be flexible with that. And again, kind of goes back to the competitiveness fund. If we get somebody in there that needs us to move the roads a little farther, then we can do that. So just that flexibility allows us to do that.
Okay. And, and maybe, I don't know if I have any other questions, maybe one other item of clarification that's important to notice while we're talking about mind-bogglingly large numbers like ninety-four million, things like that. You can only be reimbursed for expenses that are actually incurred and there actually has to be increment. So we may say ninety-four million, but there's going to have to be that much increment. There's going to have to be that much growth in the park and that much taxes generated over the years to get the reimbursement. If it doesn't happen, then you can't get reimbursed for money that's not in the fund. So it's going to be that, that park growing and expanding and bringing in new businesses that creates the tax revenue, that can then creates more money to reimburse you, which then you can use for the domino effect to bring in the next one and the next one and the next one.
That's our incentive, to get people into that park, right? And, and to get it done quickly, because we, we want to pay that down as fast as we can too. You know, and, and again, Mike talked about some of the numbers before and it's a pretty conservative estimate of, of raising those kinds of dollars within that TIF. And so my hope is that we can be successful here in the next, you know, two to three to four years, kind of to your question, and we can get those remaining acres sold and get new factories up and get new employers and things like that. So, you know, we're not going to sit back and say, oh, hey, now we got a whole bunch of ground, you know, let's, let's sit back and watch it for a while. We, we don't make any money, you know, off the farming that we have on it. So, you know, we really want more industries there, you know, creating value, creating jobs and those types of things.
Okay, great. One last question for Director Eckhoff. So the readiness fund, obviously, anything that is going to be reimbursed, it's a fund held in trust by the city, so it's going to go through some sort of review by the city. So what, what does that, what does that look like? They maybe have something where they, they have a, a possible tenant and, and they maybe need some, I mean, what's that going to look like in terms of them approaching the city and how, how that looks to say, yes, we believe this is an eligible expense?
So obviously, it'll come out, the special fund is created and held by, actually by the county and then reimbursed into us and reimbursed. So the, if Bob has a request, it's, it would be himself, probably one of his board members, and then city staff that we've, we've talked about being involved in that process would be myself, probably Director Cotter, and then probably Chief of Staff.
And since this is reimbursed, I, I take it, it, it wouldn't be something in which we would, would we release the money or would they have to use their own funding and then they would have to submit that and get reimbursed, right?
It'd be reimbursed, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Very good. Anybody else with additional questions before we move on?
Thank you all very much. Thank you for your service and we really look forward to working with you over the next three or four weeks to make this thing happen. So thank you very much for your time.
Great. We'll see you in a few weeks. Thank you. Good luck. Okay. Next item up, related item, Marion Road improvements at Foundation Park. This is going to be presented by our Director of Public Works, Mark Cotter. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Council Chair and Council Members. We just have a few slides for you today. Mark Cotter with the Office of Public Works. We want to get you caught up on some of the supporting activities with the success that's happened with Foundation Park and recognizing that when, when a business comes in, like Project Stampede, some of those basic things that are required to make sure that the transportation system will work, we make them do a traffic impact study. And then that gets thoroughly reviewed by our traffic team and ultimately identifies, okay, can the existing facilities work out there? And if not, what, what improvements are needed opening day? Are there growth in this business that may be needed in year five? And then is there a domino effect? Is there intersections that are even further away from the site that need more investment? So what we'll show you today is really the outcome of, of some of that project planning that goes hand in hand with the engineering and the planning teams and get you caught up on about five projects that are happening out in this area. So just to orientate you, north is to the right. Project one will highlight what projects were identified that needed to be done at the interchange of Marion Road and I-90. And then item two, that's really the Marion Road connection into that south Foundation Court. And some of these images will look better once we drill down. Project three, there's some additional turn lanes and traffic signals specifically for Project Stampede. They've got two entrances, they've got a main entrance and then an auxiliary entrance. And then project four is Foundation Court Construction, and Bob talked about that. That's them completing essentially their main horseshoe of, so they can market those lands. And then project five would be a design that we get kicked off here later this year. So let's dive in a little bit. So the first thing that was identified was the ramp that's on the right-hand side of your screen. The traffic impact study said a signal needs to go in that location. We also need to further develop the ramp and widen it. One of the really strong points about working with the DOT is they started to see a tolerance that if Foundation Park is successful near-term, that that second traffic signal would be needed on the left. And so with their support and working through that, we actually had the designer design both traffic signals. And then low and behold, not only, they were very successful. And so we captured really competitive pricing. Both of those interchange, intersections will be signalized and really set up the foundation to move traffic smoothly with all the employees and, and truck tra- truck traffic that'll come off this interchange. So, and then there's just some minor widening as well that's needed to Marion Road. We anticipate beginning construction in the spring of 2021. This project's already been bid to a local This project's already been bid to a local contractor, very strong local contractor, is very competitively built, bid just under five-hundred-and-seventy thousand, and will facilitate getting that work done. The DOT did give us a lump sum payment to facilitate this cost along with the design, and so these are costs that the state has agreed to pay for. All right, next project is, if you can visualize where Foundation Court, that south leg, will tie into Marion Road, we need to create an intersection to facilitate that. So the city will take some of our plating fee dollars and develop a right turn lane and develop that intersection. And then when Bob Munt and his team actually bid Foundation Court, it'll tie in nicely to that project. We're anticipating to open bids here very soon, which is in March, and then we'll get that work under, underway. We think a conservative estimate for that work will be about three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. That is city cost. All right, these are two intersection improvements that'll be paid by the actual site, the landowner. And this was something that they obviously look at very keenly when they're doing their traffic impact studies, and they identified the lane geometry that they need to have good circulation for their main entrance. So they'll further develop a left end, a right end, and then they'll actually pay for both of these modifications that'll take place at, on Marion Road, along with installing that traffic signal. Here's the project that Bob had showed you, that the reupgrading is already complete. These costs are borne by Sioux Falls Development Foundation. They're anticipating doing this work in spring, summer, 2021, and, and complete it yet this fall. So when you see some of those aerial images, the reupgrading of this road is already complete and really ready for utilities and surfacing. And then the last project we'll talk about is really that connection to the Crooks Road. And so we are currently in the process of scoping that design to understand what, what lane geometry looks like, timing needs to be. It would essentially look like a continuation of what we've already built from the interchange up to that point on the left. And then we'll also put some thought into and try to understand the, the rail occupation and to also cost out what it would cost to actually build a railroad overpass. We can certainly, anytime we can separate vehicles and, and the rail, that's, that's what we'd like to do, and if it's certainly justified, so we'll put some thought into that. And then 250 A Street, that's the road, that's that Renner-Crooks Road. The MPO is already studying that right now to see what improvements are ultimately needed to that road. And then we've already identified some items that are needed to the Renner-Crooks interchange. So at this point in time, since we haven't begun the design, we don't have a timeline or a cost, but once we do, we'll come back and share that with you. And that just really gives you a perspective. We wanted to get you caught up on all the activity that's happening out here. It's really been a partnership between the State of South Dakota Development Foundation and the City of Sioux Falls, and then ultimately now the MPO. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Questions from the council. Counselor Sale.
Thank you, Counselor Naitzer. Director Cotter, your last page there, the Marion Road paving, when you're starting to talk about an overpass on the rail, all of a sudden, you know, that, I would think would be very, very expensive for something to do that. So what kind of timeline? I know it says there, construction timeline and cost to be determined. I mean, how long do we have to think about? That, that's a lot of, that's going to be a lot of money. That's going to be a big bite right there. So how long do you think that's going to be projected?
Till we actually have a recommendation on that?
Yeah.
Is that to your question, Counselor?
Yes.
I would say that we're probably in that early summer timeframe where we'll start to look at, you know, what's, you know, because we're going to want to have a good understanding with the occupation of the rail. We want to make sure if we have all these employees out here, we have multiple ways to get them to and from their daily commutes. We'll also take a look at further development of the site, is will there ultimately be a road that goes out to 250 A Street, which is the Renner-Crooks Road? You know, anytime you have this many employees concentrated in an area, we want to make sure they all have really good access out. You don't have any access on with the two sides with McCrossan's to the south and then I-29 to the east. And so it'll be important for us to really take a thoughtful look and take a long view on, on with, with there being, you know, an encouragement and an enticement. There's a certified rail site here. A lot of times, those rail companies, they like to be able to occupy that rail line so they can efficiently move cars. And if that's going to happen on a frequency that could ultimately occupy that right-of-way more than we're comfortable with, we're going to have to really take a thoughtful look at building an overpass. And so it's still too early to really contemplate that, since we haven't had those conversations with the rail company, but we feel like it's the most responsible thing to do to kind of go through that. And I think, you know, but for, if it wasn't on such a skew, the cost wouldn't be as concerning to me. But when you put, when the skew of the railroad is with the road like it is today, it just changes the geometry of the bridges and the complexity, and, and it will obviously change the cost too. So we'll come back to you when we have a recommendation.
I appreciate that, because as, as we go through here, I mean, you've identified some costs on the other slides that you had, and some of the costs are part of the Project Stampede or Development Foundation. That was, that's the one that's kind of an open question as far as what the city would be responsible for. So just in, in my old public school math, as I'm starting to add this up, I mean, we're looking at between the ninety-four million dollar commitment I believe we're probably going to make, along with this and the other things, I mean, we're talking, all of a sudden, we're at that hundred million dollar commitment for this area up there, and some of us are going to have to defend that pretty strongly in the public. So as we define the costs as quickly as we can, it makes it easier for us to explain that to other people. So as soon as you can come up with those figures, I'd appreciate them getting it to us, and I thank you for all your hard work on this.
Yeah, will do.
Others? Anyone on the phone? Don't think I'm hearing anything. I, I think it's, and, and I think you did a pretty good job of it, where it should be noted that in any situation, the developer, whether it be a housing developer or Foundation Park developer, is responsible to build their local roads, and we build arterials. So us expanding or doing work on Marion Road is nothing out of the ordinary. Just as housing boomed out where I live, near Ellis Road, we had to build that from a rural section road to a full four-lane arterial build-out, and that cost, I think, nine to ten million dollars. I think it came in about nine million dollars. And that was a significant investment, and we, we did it because the city was growing and demand and, and traffic was picking up, and we do that all the time. The high school site, we didn't, we didn't know where that was going to be, and we had to rejigger things and build Marion Road out faster than we thought maybe we had to. But there's going to be traffic, so that's, that's what we are doing here. So I, I, I do just want to make sure it's clear that when we're building an arterial, this is not a giveaway to any particular person. It's because there is demand, or there's going to be demand, and we're going to have to meet it. We have a responsibility as a city to build infrastructure as the city grows, and the city's growing. I do really, really support looking at potentially if there's a way to do some sort of an overpass. Of course, it'd be far more expensive, but I think we definitely have to look at it, and we don't want to be short-sighted about it either. Potentially, if you may have, what if we have tenants who are using rail? And then I assume with, with companies like this, we have probably significant logistics, and there might be a lot of trucks moving in and out, and you don't want those conflict points, so we need to look at that, look at that seriously. You made a mention on the Marion Road widening at Foundation Court, that plating fee dollars would be used for that? I assume you mean the arterial, the, uh...
That's correct.
The arterial expansion fund?
Yes.
That's funded by the rounded second penny?
That's correct.
Okay. And I think that's all I have, so.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for having us. We just wanted to give you a, oh, excuse me.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I actually do have one more. You talked about the timeline. Would you expect that this, that the Marion Road would be proposed in the upcoming CIP? That it would be an, an item in the CIP we get this summer?
For the north connection?
Yes.
Yes, I do. And I, I think one of the things that we anticipate is, we've seen the success of Foundation Park, just like where we see housing and other land uses, and we want to make sure we're building with development, and now with CJ Foods and the expected amount of logistics, employees. You know, we could envision doing this road over a two, two summer season, so we do a grading and utility job one year, allow everything to settle, and then come back the following year with the surfacing. So, you know, as many times we bring forward those programs for you, there's a list of projects, you know, and if we can secure all the necessary right-of-way and what have you, I would expect that that's going to go sooner than later.
I guess the only other follow-up I, I think about, I don't know how much, you know, where the annexation, where the city, where do we end? Are, are we going to be having annexation, or do we have controlling landowners where we can do some sort of flagpole annexation or whatever, so we're not building a road that we don't, we don't own going north?
Ultimately, it's a, you know, it'll be a discussion with both our agencies, between the city and the county and the state. But with the majority of, and I apologize, I don't have a pointer, but there is going to be another connection that goes out to Marion Road, so then it just becomes a short distance to actually get up to 250 A Street. So there'll be public right-of-way there. We're going to have to evaluate that, but, you know, I think as an agency that's encouraging growth out here, if we end up having to pave a road that's slightly outside, we're going to have to evaluate that outside the city limits, but clearly adjacent to the development of Foundation Park. So that'll probably be a good topic for us to further discuss with when design progresses further.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Well, thank you for having us, and if you have any questions after this, don't hesitate to reach out. Take care.
Okay, thank you. All right, our next item is a naming ordinance, and that's presented by our own Counselor, Pat Starr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to start with a little bit of background of where we're at with the, the naming, things that we do do in, in our community. It really was a kind of a cowboy mentality where it was the Wild West, where some of our partners were selling naming rights to city facilities, literally to make payroll by the end of the week. And so back in 2013, it was Counselor Smith at the time, Darren Smith, that said, hey, we need to put some structure in place. How do we protect the citizens' assets for long-term naming rights, making some of those changes? So basically, the council borrowed some wording from a couple of different communities and tried to put a, a plan together, how we would name or rename certain things. So this ordinance was updated or created last in 2013. So what it did, it required that all naming and renaming be approved by ordinance. Commemorative designations for streets or buildings and things were done by resolution or are done by resolution now. And that ordinance in 2013 also established a naming committee to provide recommendations to this, on city property not covered by streets, libraries, and parks that had already existed, kind of in their naming things. And the ordinance at that time put it all together under the direction of Planning and Development Services. So examples like the aquatic, the Midco Aquatic Center, the Levitt Shell, the Bud Light Lounge, the Premier Club at the Premier Center, the Bates Trimble Gallery at the Washington Pavilion, and others. So there was some discussions, because, because we've gotten down the road and we have the, the benefit of hindsight, there were some things we wanted to take a look at. I heard some different things. What really brought it to my attention was one of the naming ordinance that came forward, and it required a unanimous vote of the council, which I think from a parliamentary standpoint, I don't believe our charter would allow. It was the only time that a unanimous vote. In fact, I accused our city clerk of not knowing what he was talking about. I had never heard of requiring a unanimous vote of anything to pass the council. So that started us down a, a pretty collaborative process. And really, I want to thank the Finance Department, Planning and Development Services, the Parks and Rec Department. We brought the libraries, the pavilion, the Great Plains Zoo, Delbridge Museum, the staff from the Sanford and Premier Center. And so we went through the existing naming process, and then that's kind of where we're at today with this. So what we really wanted to do was provide the flexibility for our partners to do the public-private partnerships that they want to do, but protect the citizens at the same time, so that, that the city doesn't get stuck with expenses. If a sponsor changes, has a corporate name change, who's responsible for the signage? To make sure that we have a well-written agreement. And so this ordinance is written very broadly, and the changes that we've made here in a minute that I'll, that I'll share you with you are very broad, so that we can allow our partners to be creative, but again, to be able to protect those assets of the city, so that we have a well-written, well-constructed process that we have going forward. So the ordinance revisions simply, some main things that we, we accomplished or think, that part of it, is that we wanted to make sure that we really clearly distinguish between a naming and a sponsorship. And really, the simplest way to explain it, in the ordinance, is that something that's longer than five years, a naming, it would be a naming agreement, where a sponsorship would be less than five years. So things at the, the Denny are kind of a good example of, of that process, that would be a sponsorship, or whether it was with the beer companies or beverage companies as part of that, where long-term, you know, we would name the Premier Center would be, I think, I believe it's a ten-year agreement now. So that kind of makes the, the differentiation there. And then it also requires a naming agreement when a significant donation's involved. Again, we don't want to be, by ordinance, we don't want it to be, we want it to be written very broadly, so that the folks that are involved, whether it's the private partner or the public partner coming together, can be creative, but not risk the, the city's assets as, as part of that involved, and so that it's very, very clearly spelled out. And then the naming agreement requirements, specifically in the agreement, has to tell us who fin- who's financially responsible and for donor name changes, the inclusion of language on how to cure a material breach by the name person or the organization, when its actions may reflect poorly on the city. I, I call it the Bill Cosby Clause, or as things change over time. And one of the other things that, that really, that there's got to be a termination date when the, the agreement comes to a conclusion, unless that the council, and again, we leave the, the broad-based part of this, unless the council finds a compelling reason to, to not have a termination date. It, it does sound a little trying to cover both ends of it, but most of these agreements should have an ending date, so that you have a chance to update, make changes, both from the, the private partner as well as us as a, a public body. So again, the ordinance revisions, the city may rename any city property not bound by this agreement, or, yeah, by an agreement. It removes the five-year deceased requirement. The current ordinance right now, if you wanted to name something after like my daughter, who's a great person that's in the audience today, you could have the Angela Star Park, but the way the ordinance is currently, you have to be deceased for five years before you could do that. So technically, the way we've gotten around it as a city is we've said that it could be the Star Family Park rather than the Angela Star Park. This, by removing this, gives an incentive, so people that are close to that end of life or the end of time, you can name it after a specific person if the merits are there, that it meets the rest of the, the ordinance requirements, that there isn't anything magical about that five years, but our partners have told us that there were, were several possibilities that they were pitching, that maybe that we want to name it after mom or dad and be able to see the naming... able to see the naming before they're gone, as an example. The, the five years isn't magical. There is something to be said about, okay, we know everything about the person before they're gone. But a lot of times in that five-year period, families have moved on and made other endowments or gifts through the years, and our partners have missed out on opportunities that, that could have helped both in a public-private way. We've also, in this ordinance revisions, city property may be named after a person or an organization when they provide a significant donation of land, funds, goods or services, or if the city council finds compelling reason, reasons and strong public settlement sentiment for doing so. So again, it's not always about the money, or it's not about the donation, but it could be the significant contribution someone makes to the, to the community. And again, the ordinance leaves it very broad, so that the deal can be negotiated between that private group, or a group of people who just bring someone forward. You know, I always think of Kenny Anderson Community Center was one of those things where we honored Commissioner Anderson in, in a naming right. And so this allows us to, to continue to do this. It also eliminates the unanimous vote threshold. It's just a simple majority of the council to approve, to approve these agreements. And then the other thing that we'd like to remove from the ordinance is currently, you're not allowed to include titles, rank, or religious designation. So that requirement or prohibition would be removed. So the one I think of right now is that if we wanted to name something after Dr. Martin, the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., we wouldn't be able to do the, the naming either the Reverend or the doctor part of the name. So we do have people who are significantly known in our community by their titles, whether it's religious or academic. And it also remove, it just gives us a, a lot better, you know, people are known by nicknames and different things. So it, it gives, again, the broad flexibility to allow these things to be done, but they're still negotiated as part of it. So again, the City Attorney's Office, Planning and Development Services will give us a chance to, to put those things in place for us. So that is my, as brief as I can be on it, but I, I again, want to be very thankful to all the groups coming together to find something that works for everyone is always a, a challenge, and it's good that we've gotten all of our department people to come together. Finance has really done a nice job of leading this process, as well as all the other groups that I mentioned earlier. So if you don't mind, I'd be willing to take questions.
Great. Questions from the council. Counselor Sale.
Thank you. Counselor Starr, how many hands did this document have to go through to get approval before it ended up here?
Well, I, I don't think the hands were as tough as maybe trying to do it in the middle of a pandemic. And, you know, we started way back in February a year ago, working through the process. So again, from Planning and Development Services to Finance, Parks and Rec, Library, we worked with the, the zoo and the pavilion, and just a, a number of people of, of trying to get it through. And then like most ordinance changes, getting it through the City Attorney's Office is always the toughest, because lawyers want to make sure that they, they have everything exactly right. And we're still working on a couple of those formal changes to the wording before the, the ordinance is introduced. So there, there were a lot of good people that have, have worked on this to get it, so that it's not overly restrictive, but again, that it protects the citizens of Sioux Falls.
Well, thank you for all your work.
Others on the phone?
I don't think I'm hearing anything. There's obviously a lot of changes here, but a lot of it is, looks like some of it is essentially moving things around. So some of it is cleanup, it appears. Would, would you say the, the major, I mean, one of the things that one would ask is either what problem is this fixing, or what is the improvement? Would, would it be your contention that, that we and our partners may be losing out on sponsorships and gifts because of the rules currently in place?
I, I think there's some of that. I think some of it is, is that as, as a body, we need to set the policy guidelines of what they are. We've had the benefit of six or seven years of, of working through it. So I think some of the partners had a feeling that they wish, I, I think the strongest thing that we heard from the partners was the five-year part of it, of trying to decide, was that the magical number? Should we wait the, should someone have to be deceased for five years before it made sense to name something after them? And I think like most things, there's probably some pluses and minuses of changing that. But at the same time, if it opens up some opportunities, and, and there's nothing that says you can't wait till someone's gone, but they, I think the partners really saw that as a deterrent to, to making some deals move forward, or some partnerships.
This is purely speculation on my part, but I, I assume it was potentially, they just figured maybe after five years, if there's any skeletons in someone's closet, it was gonna come out by then?
I, I think that was the, again, it was that, and it matched some similar legislation. Like most things, we don't always create things from scratch. So by borrowing the, the thought processes of other communities, and that was one that I know that President Smith was, thought maybe that wasn't the, the best part of his drafting in this originally.
And I, I don't know if he, if he wanted to make any statement, or if he was just here for questions. I, I guess, if you had no objection.
I usually have an objection to turning the microphone over to former Counselor Smith, but I would be glad to, if we set a time limit to it.
Yeah, but being a, being, being one of our partners, of course, and managing one of our city-owned facilities, and who has a number of naming items, and being somebody who apparently helped to write the original ordinance, I, I'd be curious of your perspective on this.
Sure. Thank you. Darren Smith, Washington Pavilion Management. Yeah, let me start with this. If you're looking for somebody to blame, you don't have to look any further. This is something that when, when I was working with the city and the administration, you know, one of my roles was to be a liaison to downtown organizations and other organizations. And there were some things, some namings going on at the pavilion, ironically, and some other places, that I really felt like the city wasn't being protected and didn't have a role in that. And so we went looking, doing some research, thinking, oh, I bet there's all kinds of great ordinances out there. We're way behind on this. Well, the good news and bad news is, the good news is that there really, we weren't that far behind. There were not a lot of cities, we found, that had naming rights ordinances and policies that govern that. The bad news is there weren't a lot of cities that had policies that we could look at. We looked at several, and frankly, the only one that, that we thought was good and comprehensive was this ordinance in Omaha. And so by and large, it was a copy and paste job, but because we felt it was very comprehensive and, and encompassing, and I think in hindsight, now that we've lived with it for a few years, and I'm in a different position, seeing the other side of the fence on this one, I just think it goes a little too far. It is restrictive, you know, to, something that always stuck with me, when I, I was literally on the job at the pavilion and gone from the city a week. And we were doing, having an event for an art gallery named after a family. And one of the family members came up to me afterwards privately and said, you know, he said, hey, I don't know if you read in all the information about this, but we're naming this for the family, but this is for my mom. And I said, you know, I thought that was interesting, because I didn't see anything about your dad in the materials, having any connection to art or the pavilion. It's all about your mom. And he said, right. He said, well, because of this stupid city rule, we can't name this after my mom, and that is absolutely the intention. So I will be back on the fifth anniversary of her death, asking you to rename it. And so of course, I did not confess. To being the author of that, I just said, yes, sir. That makes a lot of sense. And that's happened a few times since then, where we've had people come forward, and somebody maybe had been deceased, but only a year or two. And to have this conversation about, you know, we can't, we have to wait three years to make sure and all this stuff, it just, I really like the idea of getting rid of this and substituting with language, very simple, straightforward language, very common in naming rights agreements, that just says, look, anything happens at any time that causes us to be uncomfortable with the name, we can take it, we can remove it. No questions asked, period. That's our sole authority. And so this, you know, this is something that would be required in agreements going forward now, and that's in the ordinance revision.
Okay. That's very helpful. I appreciate it. Thank you, and thank you for coming.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
One, one other thing that I, I neglected to, to point out, really, the things that we looked at with the 2013 ordinance that we did, it spent a lot of time talking about individuals, but really, a lot of the deals that we're seeing in the public-private partnerships are really organizations. So one of the things that this does as well is clearly define what an organization is and how to, to react to that. And I think that gives more guidance, both to the City Attorney's Office, as well as the folks that are negotiating the deal, to be creative, but to, again, protect the citizens. So I wanted to make sure that we're also in the definitions, really clearly pointing out what an organization is in reference to this type of program, so.
So does the, okay, very good. Does, I, I guess the way that I read this, for the most part, the, the review process doesn't change. It's just some of the criterion in which it's judged. Like, for example, there isn't disqualifications for five years, but it still goes through a naming committee. They still have to make certain findings. The city council ultimately approves it.
Exactly. There's a nine, the ordinance points out a, a nine-person board that includes directors, and then three citizens that are named by the mayor with advice and consent to the council. So that process is still the same. Again, it's just being able to take the hindsight of five or six years of experience, and to try to improve it and, and move it into the right way and, and continue on. I think the mayor has talked publicly about a, a number of public-private partnerships coming up. I think this puts us in a way to put, you know, the process. So it's really clear for everyone, but again, the, the overall intent is the, the flexibility of the partners to, to get what you're looking for in a naming request from the individuals, but keeping the, keeping the citizens protected as well over a period of time, and spelling things out clearly, just making sure that what's in that contract. Without telling the City Attorney's Office what to do, here's the basic guidelines that an agreement would have to have.
Okay. Counselor Selberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As far as the unanimous vote part, has there been a lot of naming things that have come up that have been not approved?
No, no, but it's just, I, I'm not sure. There was some question with visiting with the city clerk, whether that, that it's both Roberts Rules type of thing, or if it's a charter-specific and whether you could do it or not. And we just made the decision that it would be a majority vote of the council, rather than digging too deep into whether we could require that or not. I'm just, it, it just seems odd that one or two people could throw off the majority after it's gone through a pretty lengthy process, even before it gets to the council.
Okay. Interesting. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess following up on that, I, I, I think I, I can see where they were, what they were thinking at the time, but I've always wondered about that clause. I haven't, like, you know, I haven't done like lots of scholarship on it, but reading the charter, it pretty explicitly states how many affirmative votes are required to pass an ordinance or resolution. So I always wondered whether or not there was a conflict there, and if you really dug into it, if that even would stand up, but.
It's just faster to get rid of it.
Got it. I take it you were, you were looking for, for any input from the council before you move on to your next steps?
Correct. Like I said to Counselor Sale earlier, the, the hardest part was probably just getting it all done through a pandemic, and getting everybody to, to do it, so.
Okay. Very good. Any final comments before we move on? If not, thank you for bringing that forward. Look for, forward to seeing it coming forward in the future. Okay. That concludes our presentations. That brings us to public comment. Anyone who'd like to speak up to, for five minutes on any item we covered today? Welcome.
Scott, Scott Ersmann, Sioux Falls. I'm gonna talk about this extraordinarily massive $94 million TIF that we want to give. I'm gonna break it up into two parts. First part is just the, the money part of it is, is quite ridiculous. And I, I was actually pretty surprised by watching the presentation and looking at it, how sloppy it is, because a lot of these numbers don't really add up. Let's say we're gonna provide these 1,300 jobs. Let's say that's true. Where are these jobs gonna come from? We have one of the lowest unemployments of any city of our size in the country. It seems like bringing in 1,300 jobs to Sioux Falls is growing for growth's sake. The guy who runs Strong Towns, you can read a lot about, he writes a lot about this, how cities want to grow for growth's sake, and all it does is cost taxpayers more and more money building new infrastructure and more infrastructure that we need to take care of. Sioux Falls has grown a lot since I moved here in 1991, and with that has come more tax, higher taxes, more crime. So I'm not quite sure what that's for. It's growth for growth's sake. There also, there are numbers claiming, basically, that people are gonna be making $50,000 a year at the businesses coming in. That has never happened in the history of the city. We know those jobs are gonna be closer to about 30, 30 to 33,000 a year. So that's a false claim there. I also want to think about the, the, the tax revenue. That's way off, too. They're claiming 24 million a year. If you actually do the math with sales taxes and salaries, it's around about five to six million a year. And also want you to think about, just imagine if we took $94 million in tax, but I talked about this a few weeks here, ago here. We took $94 million in tax rebates and gave them to affordable housing units in the core of our city, small apartments, duplexes, homeowners. Can you imagine the economic growth we would get from that? You would have local contractors working on houses. You'd have local contractors building, fixing roads. You'd have more affordable housing. You'd be fixing up homes. You'd be reinvesting in the people. Instead, we want to take $94 million tax rebate and basically give it to a multi-international company, one of them based out of South Korea. Does that even make any sense? I, I want you to think about this, not on the money front for once, on TIFs. I want you to think about this morally and ethically. Do you think it's ethical and moral to give massive tax breaks to international companies that aren't promising any really good wages? Or would it be more ethical and moral to give those tax breaks to the actual people who built this city, who've lived in this city, who work in this city, who have jobs in this city? I think that's a pretty easy question to answer. But for some reason, we continue to bring these TIFs forward, and we think that for some reason, the Ronald Reagan trickle-down economics is suddenly gonna work in our city, even though it's never worked anywhere, even though study after study after study shows trickle-down economics never works, the rich get richer, the poor get poorer, and it just continues. And have I asked for a million times up here, there's never been a comprehensive study presented to the public that shows that TIFs have provided any economic benefit to our community. Like I said, we've grown a lot over the past 20 years, but we haven't really gotten anything, we've become better because of it. Sure, we got a couple of nicer restaurants downtown, but we have more crime. We have, we have, we have less affordable housing. Nothing has ever came out of growing this fast that has benefited the community, except that we're bigger and we pay more in taxes now. That's it. And we have a couple of nicer restaurants downtown. I want you to think about this morally and ethically. Screw the numbers. Don't care about the numbers. Don't really matter. Think about what we should be investing tax rebates and incentives in this town to. The people or South Koreans? Thank you.
Thank you. Others who have public input? Seeing none, I'm gonna look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we move into executive session, discussing the qualifications, competency, performance, character, or fitness of any public officer, employee, or prospective public officer, employee. The term employee does not include any independent contractor pursuant to SDCL 1-25-21.
Second, we have a motion to move into executive session, moved by Sale, seconded by Selberg. Roll call vote, please. by Selberg. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmembers Brecky?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightser?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
That passes seven to zero. We need to clear out the chambers. Thank you very much. Have a good night.